Transition from our work session to this, so. All right, I need my agenda in front of me first. There we go. We've got papers everywhere here. All right, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please stand. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I apologize for running a little bit late here and thank you again for your patience. I understand our screens are not working today, so we've all got some hard copies, I think, in front of us for the presentations later on. Vicki, do we have any persons wishing to address the board? Thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes from our meeting on March 7th, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Right, that motion passes. Any, I didn't see any conflicts of interest this month, this month? Nope. All right, can I get an approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I've seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to the reports of the President.
President Parker, members of the Board, we're, thank you for giving us this chance to speak to you. My name is Tracy Knoller. I'm Vice President of Student Affairs and Institutional Research at Southeast Tech. We're changing it up just slightly, so if you can find the sheet on the CTE grant, the CTE Academy Southeast Tech Partnership, we're going to cover that first. We have some guests with us today. We've got Josh Hall, who's the Principal of the CTE Academy, Renee Oinas, who is the Career Coach underneath the grant, and we have Mitch Lynch, who's the Internship Coordinator underneath the grant. And Josh does have to fly out here pretty soon to go to another meeting, so we're going to go through this report first and then go to the others. Going to explain a little bit about the CTE grant. It's really a truly exciting grant that we received through the CTE Foundation. The grant itself, the purpose of it, is to basically impact youth 16 to 24 to get them into skilled training. Frequently, we have graduates or even students who don't graduate high school go out and get some kind of a job, but they never go out and get that skilled training. And the purpose of the grant is, especially for low-income, moderate-income individuals, youth, to get them into some kind of skilled training. And that can be anything from CNA to welding to a one-year diploma at Southeast, to a two-year degree, and obviously even to a four-year. But the purpose is to get them interested, get them motivated, and get them to figure out what is the best choice for them so that they can move on to something and get that skilled training, and obviously a better life through that. And we're really pleased to talk about progress that has been made, and I have to give the credit to these three because they've been doing all the hard work. I get to do the report. I asked them if they wanted to, and they say, "No, you can go ahead and do it," because they're really doing the work of it. It basically has three focus areas for the grant. The first is career exploration, trying to get students matched into careers that make sense for them and that they have an interest and ability in. And the biggest one is internships. That is the key area that the grant is trying to fund. But beyond that, we're looking at shadowing experiences. The grant is interested in career fairs, any way that you can get them out to find out, get industry partners to come in, get them onto campuses, so campus visits, just some way for them to explore, what are some opportunities for me? Even doing career assessments where we're trying to help them figure out what it is that they're most interested in. The second one is soft skilled training. You know, more and more industry keeps telling us, "You give us great graduates, you give us great skilled workers, we don't have any question that they're high quality, we always want to see more of those soft skills." What can you do to help them have those soft skills? And one of the things that the CTE Academy really did, I think, a great job of this year is with the internships, they had them go through the Bring Your A Game program before they went on their internships. And that is actually a training program that is designed to give those soft skills, the initial soft skills, how important attendance is, how do you deal with a conflict that might happen at your work site? Just those basic things we all need to remember are important for a job. And they used our instructors at Southeast, who are trained in the Bring Your A Game, to actually go down and teach those courses, so help build that partnership and that relationship. And the last one is skilled training, because that is a lot of what this grant is about, providing that skilled training. Some of that is immediate, even while they're in high school. So providing CNA training, CPR training, EMT training, or if a student comes out to Southeast and even does welding or some other, even while they're in high school, they're now gaining those skills so they can immediately, if they choose to, go into industry and get that better career. Or if they choose to, they can build on that by coming out to Southeast or somewhere else to get a further diploma or degree. And of course, obviously, degrees and courses are important too, so we're hoping and we're expecting that more of those students, rather than choose not to go on, will actually come to Southeast and get that further degree. And then even pre-apprenticeship programs or apprenticeship programs. So it isn't all about coming on to technical institutes or going on to a college. A lot of it can be right, going to work, but we're trying to build those skills so that student can immediately step into something that's going to be a little bit higher paying and more rewarding than just going out there and getting a job. So the big thing is, where are we now? We had to do a report for the CTE grant, we had to give them our numbers, and so we thought it'd be great to provide those numbers for you as well. Internship opportunities, that's the number of internship opportunities that industry has provided. And they were looking at 221 potential internships this spring. In terms of students for the spring, there were about 347 who showed an interest in doing, and that's a huge number. 211 did get placed, so there were 211 actually that are in internships right now, with more potential internships coming this summer as well. What's really exciting is I have that number of 151 in there for potential students who are interested in 1819. Renee just told me that number has now jumped to over 300 students who are interested in an internship for next year. I don't see that slowing down. I think we're going to have more and more high school students that want to get out there, try a career field, or get some experience. I think the bigger part is going to be trying to find all the industry that will take them and make that partnership work. And it's great to have Mitch there to work and Renee to work on that, and Josh. So I think there's some great potential for the future as well. Other numbers, career exploration, so opportunities to have career fairs. CTE has two Fall '17, they had 348 attended, and Spring '18, there was 270 attended. Industry tours, 98 so far, but they again told me more are coming, and they'll probably reach more over 300 that will end up going to some kind of industry tour. And then campus visits over 300 have already gone to a campus for a visit. Soft skilled training, we talked about that, Bring Your A Game, 104 were trained. There is a certification students can receive, 81 of them actually did receive that certification. You'll notice the certification is down there, the CNA, 72 were registered so far. Of those 18 have passed of 24 who have taken it to this point. So we're starting to see those students complete that training as well. 173 students did receive CPR certificates, and 15 are even going to attempt the EMT certificate. Couple of things with this in terms of the CTE grant itself. We did the report, we turned that in. We also had a call just the other day. Josh and I were talking with Tia Hodges, I believe is her last name, who is our representative for the CTE grant. And we're talking about the numbers and how we're doing and the expectations and so forth. And we started talking about future and what would be the opportunity. This was a $250,000 grant, and is there a potential that we could do another grant? And she said, "Absolutely." She did seem to be encouraging us to apply again, so that's nice to hear. She also said, which I didn't know at first was a potential opportunity, but it may be possible to even use what we're doing now as part of that grant and then just build upon that grant. So we're going to have to go back and take a look at, what could we do next? How could we make this even a greater opportunity? What resources would we need? We kind of got the impression from her that she kind of likes what we're doing, and the numbers are looking good, and so she's looking at that saying, "Yeah, this is a good opportunity." She also asked if we would do a presentation, they do a webinar in May, and there's two areas, two colleges, that she would like to do a presentation on what they're doing and the success they're seeing. And she asked if we would do it. So those are all indicators that this grant's going in the right direction. It's definitely impacting students. A couple of things that we're looking at now to do. Renee is reaching out to students who have not taken the ACT yet, but they're getting ready to graduate. The ACT is just one indicator of whether you're going to go on to get some other skilled training, but it's a great way to start to grab those students and say, "Do you have a plan? Do you have something in mind?" And then if she finds students that they're not sure what to do, we'll connect them to Southeast, to our admissions individuals, or to testing, or whatever, assessment tests, or whatever, to try to get them thinking about, what do you want to do in the future? The second group we're trying to reach is, we know there are those in the 16 to 24 range who've left high school. They've graduated, but they have not gone on to higher education. And so we want to reach out to them in our community too and say, "We've got opportunities for you. There are some things we can do, and there's some funding available that could help you with it." And so that's our next step with the grant in terms of what we want to try to accomplish for the rest of this time. The grant actually lasts until around October of next year, so we do get into next fall. And so there will be some additional numbers that we'll be able to provide with that. But again, there is some opportunities for us to possibly extend that even farther than that, so. Any questions? Yes?
Tracy, um, thank you. By the way, um, did we have a baseline? Like when we applied for the grant, did you have to provide what numbers we had for internships so we can compare what this program has done compared to what we used to have?
We did not have to do a baseline for the grant, and I can check with Josh, you're just saying, but I want to explain that with the grant itself, we do have targets that they want us to hit. And so when we're looking at these numbers, they're right in line with the targets. In some cases, they're higher than the targets. The one thing is, anybody we are working with specifically for the grant, we can work with other students too, but for the grant, they must be within a four-county region, and they must be low to moderate income. So when we get done, we're going to have to separate that out and say, "Here's the total number we were able to help or assist, but here are the ones that fit right into the grant." In terms of numbers, Josh, do you?
Good afternoon. Last year, we had about 170 or so interns, if I remember right. I think Dr. Boyzen gave it, it was 173, 170 right in there. And so this summer, we'll continue to add interns to that as well. And we'll have some through the Academy of Finance this summer, and those are all included in that 170. So we'll be looking at 220 to 250, right in that range, depending on how much interest there is for the summer. And then next fall and spring of next year, we already have over 300 kids, as far as registrations go, that are coming in. And those will be spread out at our main high schools as well as the CTE Academy. So we'll have participation from all over, all over town.
How does the matching process work for students and industry? Is there an application and interview as if it were like a real job experience? Or is it just an application, and then you say, "Well, you would make the most sense for this," or what's the process?
Yep. So for example, there is an application, you know, so these registrations for next year. Career advisors, Renee and Mitch are going out to those kids and saying, "Now, what's your interest area? You know, what do you have background in? What's your skill level at?" To try to make that match then. So that when we go out to industry to try to set up an interview, we can be upfront with them about what kind of skill set these students are coming in with, so we can try to make the best match possible. But part of that process, we try to take them through an application and an interview, and you know, they have to earn it. You know, sometimes it is competitive, there could be multiple students applying for one position. You know, and sometimes it's a matter of going through the interview and just making sure that it is a match with that business personality-wise, and you know, to make sure it is what they're looking for in an intern.
Any other questions for Tracy? Right, can I get a motion and a second to approve the?
So moved.
Second.
The numbers are just outstanding, and just thank you, Josh and Renee and Mitch, for all your hard work identifying these kids and getting them to, you know, these opportunities that they have in front of them. So it's just, it's exciting to hear that there could be possibility for future expansion or even just further funding. And so, just great job. This is exciting.
I think the one thing I would add is, when I think about when I was younger and I thought about what I wanted to be when I grew up, the job I have right now didn't exist when I was in high school. And so I think that's very true for a lot of our even middle schoolers right now. They might have something in mind that they think they want to do, and that job may be gone. Or there might be something new that doesn't even exist right now that is exactly what they were meant to do. And so the 16 to 24 range, I think, is a really good age because they can dream about things, but they can have a chance to try it out and see if it really is a good fit for them. And it may be something they didn't even know existed or had any experience or education about because when they were thinking about it and their parents are saying, "You should be a teacher, or you should be an engineer, or you should be a whatever," that's what it was, and the job didn't exist. And so I think it's awesome that we can get these hands-on opportunities for students to really explore and decide before they commit to something long-term and have a big financial commitment to that, to say, "Wow, this really is my passion, and I didn't even know that it was available." So, good work.
And even to go back, as you said, the 16 to 24-year-olds, they're already out of the K-12 system, but perhaps that's, that is, you know, it's a great recruiting tool for STI and just being able to, you know, you didn't know what you wanted to do then, but here are some possibilities for you now.
And in the end, you think about the impact you're not only having on the individual, but the workforce. You know, the more of these individuals we can get to some skilled training, the better off we are in terms of having skilled workers for the jobs that they have.
Exactly. Good work. Thank you. Anything else? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
President Parker, members of the Board, hello. Craig Peters, Dean of Curriculum Instruction, and we're going to talk about our story, so it should look somewhat familiar to you as well. Tonight, we have our third installment of our business program, so we have marketing, which has the one main program but also two emphasis. Today, we have Brian Williams and Kim Yai, our two marketing full-time instructors.
Good afternoon. President Parker, members of the Board, thank you for allowing us to come out and showcase our marketing programs today with you. We're going to go through a PowerPoint with you and tell you a little bit about our three programs that we have at Southeast.
Do you have one or six? Do you have a pack with more? Okay.
Oh, okay.
I have this one, so we'll just kind of go that way. All right, trying to save the paper.
They gave us the big print, you know.
Okay, we have this.
Perfect. I'm on slide two. Our programs, our marketing program has been around since the late 1980s. We do have the marketing program, and then we have the two emphasis, marketing design, and then we have marketing with a sales emphasis. So those are the three programs in the marketing area.
Our faculty, my name is Kim Yai, and the classes I teach are usually the introduction to marketing class. I teach Adobe Creative Cloud and Design, social media, and advertising. I've been at Southeast Tech for 17 years, and before that, I was an administrator at a couple of different colleges out of state, as well as here in Sioux Falls.
And I'm Brian Williams. I teach classes like marketing, sales, consumer behavior, market research, and marketing management. I've been teaching there 14 years now. I also have about 22 years of public and private experience, and I was the owner of a market research firm for about 10 years prior to going to Southeast.
Who are our students? As far as our traditional students go, we think about 100-mile radius is a good average for where we get our traditional students. They take classes at Southeast Tech, some of them live on campus, some of them live in surrounding apartments. We get transfer students from a lot of the state schools that maybe not, don't think that's a good fit for them, maybe after a semester, maybe after an entire year, maybe after two. So we advise a lot of students in how to complete their degree with some transfer courses coming in as general education courses or whatnot. Our non-traditional students are those that are working at a job already, they want to further their career, maybe advance their degree, get a raise, whatever, and so we get a lot of those students. Most of those are now our online students. We would say about 50% of our students do take our programs fully online, and we have students from all over the state, as well as other states doing that. Oh, okay, online programs. We utilize our best practices as outlined by the Higher Learning Commission. All of our classes are identical to what you would normally get as a traditional student in class. For example, lectures are voiced, PowerPoints. When I teach my InDesign class, I actually capture my screen and walk them through the steps that they need to take to make a certain document or presentation. So if you are an online student versus, it's all the same, a lot of interaction. We have forum posts that students have to create every week as a topic progresses, and also answer back to some of their classmates, depending on the class. So a lot of the same interaction that you would get as an in-class student.
I'm going to talk about the data that we have, and we've had over 1,000 graduates to date in the marketing program. About seven years ago is when we added the two emphasis, the marketing design and the sales program. So those have only been around about seven years, so we have about five years of graduates in those programs. We graduate about 30 to 35 graduates every year, some years more, some years just slightly less. But so that's about what we average. Most employment numbers there, within six months graduation, Tracy takes a statistical analysis on those, 96% of those are employed, and they are all employed in some area of the marketing field, so we're pretty happy about that. That's a really nice statistic. Where are they going after they graduate? 85% stay in South Dakota, which we like. 8% go back to Iowa, 5% Minnesota, and then 2% to other places.
Innovative leadership. The entire business department really stresses student retention from semester to semester and year to year. And so we have a lot of events that we put on for our students to build relationships with them. Some are just fun, such as our Halloween costume contest, the, well, the diversity fair was fun, but that allows our students to, you know, some of them are coming from very small towns, and they've never been around a diverse crowd before, and so it just gives them a chance to come up to someone that is different from them in some way or another and have an open conversation. We also do what's called a successful student seminar every semester. In fact, this one's coming up April 10th, and we're calling it "What's Next?" We're having employers in the Sioux Falls area come in and do five-minute little mini-presentations on their business and what their workers do, and then we'll have a college or a job fair. The second part of the day is where we'll have representatives from all of the colleges where we have articulation agreements with, and they will be composed as a panel telling our students what they have as options if they want to continue their education.
I'm going to talk about, you know, and technical education is really about hands-on types of activities. And for instance, when I took market research in college, we really studied the theoretical stuff behind market research. And we didn't really learn about how to do market research, and so we have a focus group facility at Southeast Tech. And in that focus group facility, one of the things the students do is, we treat it as though they've been hired by a company to conduct a focus group for them. So they develop the discussion guide, they conduct the focus group. We record it in a room with two-way mirrors so they can't see us. I sit back there and grade the discussion, and I have three other students back there with me who are recording and learning how to use all the recording equipment. Then they get that video, and they have to write a report, and then as though they're presenting it to the board with the results and the recommendations. And it takes about five weeks to do that, to get all the students through that process. But you know, I see them five years later, and they're like, "I remember that book." And so it's that hands-on stuff that we really like doing with them, and that's really part of the value.
And the online students videotape theirs and send them in.
Yeah, they do the exact same thing. They just have to do all the videotaping on their own.
What do grads say about Southeast Tech? We have three slides of some of our past graduates. Basically, what we hear is that they enjoy our past work experience in the industry. Brian and I, we both have very diverse, his is more in market research, marketing management, mine is more in advertising and design, and so they like our past experience. They enjoy the fact that they get hands-on experience, job-related skills, rather than some liberal arts-type classes. They can get out faster, get a job. And the faculty-student relationship, I think, is what comes up the most from our students in that we get to know them while they're there, even though it's only two years. We really feel that we get to know who they are and can encourage them in different areas of their lives.
I'm going to cover the slide, says where do our graduates work and what do they do? I'm going to cover the slide that says, where do our graduates work and what do they do? And as we were preparing this, we, everywhere we go in Sioux Falls and in the area, we see our past graduates. And I mean literally every place I go. In fact, one of my boys used to come with me wherever we went. And I'd talk to him, is that another student? Yeah, that's, that's right. And so they are everywhere. And I'm not going to go through that whole list there with you. But those are the types of jobs they have. They are there right now. And these were just sort of people off the top of our head that we sort of know where they're at and what they're doing. The types of jobs they have, marketing managers, sales managers, account executives, business owners, event coordinators, market analysts. And then we have listed all the different types of companies that they're working at. So it's really great to see all these graduates all around Sioux Falls and helping the employers fulfill those employee needs. It's really fantastic.
So basically, our grads work in all industries. It doesn't matter if it's a small mom-and-pop type shop up to, you know, a Citibank or hospital. Everyone needs to market their product. Everyone needs to have the right prices. We, marketing is basically the four Ps. You have the right price, the product at the right price, distribute it in the right manner and promote it. So every company needs marketing background, whether it's their own or an agency doing it for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd just like to see the 85% stick around here. That's pretty, pretty great.
A lot of our students also go on to, in fact, you probably heard from other business faculty that we have a very large percentage of our students that go on to the University of Sioux Falls, to Southwest Minnesota State, to the University Center to continue their education. And I know quite a few that have four-year and even beyond that.
So you guys just give them the leg up and they take it from there?
Yeah. Perfect, yeah.
I think marketing in general is an underappreciated art, I would say. I think people, like you said, you need to sell your products, you need to sell your place, whatever it is. But I think even as individuals, we're all marketers of ourselves too.
Exactly.
And so when you think about the skills that you learn in a marketing class, it's not just about, I need to sell this pen, but I need to sell you on me as a person too. And so the confidence and the soft skills that we talk about so many times when we sit at this table for all of our students, whether it's K-12 or post-12th grade. I think everybody needs to have those skills. And marketing is really the basis for a lot of that too. So you guys should feel good about knowing that you're helping students to get great jobs. But I think you're also helping people to grow personally and professionally in that way too. So thank you very much.
It opens their eyes. One of the classes I teach is social media. And a lot of the students are like, oh, I know how Facebook works, you know? Well, not from a business standpoint. It's very different. You know, reading the analytics and the statistics and behaviors. And a lot of that is self-branding themselves.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the academic program overview report?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Well, I just, I'd like to thank Brian and Kim for being here tonight. And as I've said and we've said time and time and time again, we love, you know, hearing from you all, from the faculty members and students and understanding the programs that Southeast Tech has to offer. And it's just, it's a highlight for the meeting. So thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay. You're up.
Good afternoon. President Parker, members of the board. Vaughn Hurd, Director of Industry Relations. And in that capacity, I'm here to report on the 2018 South Dakota State Skills Conference and Competition that Southeast Tech is hosting on April 12th and 13th. Excuse me. If you're not familiar with Skills USA, they are an international student organization that focuses on career readiness, especially in the technical fields. And they are huge proponents, obviously, of technical education. If you want kind of an entertaining watch sometime, just Google Mike Rowe and Skills USA. A, you will get a lot of hits. B, Mike Rowe's an entertaining guy. So it might be kind of fun. This year, we will have students competing in over 40 different competition areas. We will have, the competition is centered at Southeast Tech. However, other competitions will take place at Lake Area Tech and Mitchell Tech as well, generally due to facilities and program availability. As an example, the cosmetology program will be held at Lake Area, simply because we don't have that program. So it is truly a statewide competition. There are competitions in just about any of the areas that we have programs in and obviously additional. So some of the larger competitions, numbers-wise, are welding. There's three different kinds of welding competition. There's a statue creation. There is a team welding competition. And there's a fabrication competition. Two different kinds of, actually, three different kinds of construction. There is, there's a math competition. There's an extemporaneous speaking competition. So just about every area that you can think of in the technical areas, we will have those competitions. We will have students in from all across the state. We will have 11 different high schools represented. All four tech schools will be represented. And the last number I had was that we had 273 registered competitors. Again, not all of them will be here. We're expecting roughly 200 here in Sioux Falls during that two, day and a half period of time. As these students prepare for and compete in this, those top performers in each of these competitions then have an opportunity to go to a national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. That is quite an event. It's represented by over 8,000 people from across the country. The top performers in that competition then have the opportunity to go to the international competition, which is held in various parts. It's been held in Australia, it's been held in Abu Dhabi, it's been all over the place. So skills is very well structured, very well organized. And obviously, they do a lot in terms of promoting technical education and the technical careers and the trades. Our industry partners are a huge contributor and part of this. We have 39 named sponsors for the competition. I would like to highlight Interstate's Incorporated, who gave a $5,000 cash donation to this to help us fund the conference and competition. We're certainly appreciative of that and look forward to proudly displaying their banner during the week. We have a number of professional associations represented, the Trucking Association, the South Dakota Auto Dealers, Home Builders, AGC are all there and very much involved in, both in presence and in funding. So we're very appreciative of all those. On Thursday night, the 12th, we will have a career fair. And we have over 50 exhibitors for that career fair. So obviously, the employer base has taken notice. They're going to be well represented. And we look forward to hosting them on our campus. And speaking of which, I would like to invite all of you to come out. It would be Thursday evening if you would like to. That's the opening ceremony. We will have also the career fair. And then the students and competitors will go through a variety of things. We have mock interviews. We have some job skills training opportunities for them. And then again, certainly would love to see you there Friday. The competitions will start at 7:30 Friday morning. It's required that they're done by 3:30. And then from there, we go into a closing ceremony and an award ceremony. So if you have the time, we would love to have you out, have you see what we're doing on campus. And then just to conclude here, this competition will be on Southeast Campus for the next two years following this year. So we have it in 2018, 19, and 20. And by the end of 2020, I'm pretty sure I'll be happy to hand it off to someone else. So any questions?
Remind me when the opening ceremony is, Thursday, this Thursday?
The opening ceremony will be not Thursday, the 12th.
The 12th, thank you.
At what time?
I believe that is at 4:30 on Thursday. I'm having trouble keeping the schedule in my head, question itself.
I just want to thank you and everyone at Southeast Tech for hosting this because I know it's extra work for all of you. But the opportunities you're providing to students and the community through the career fair and so forth, they're just wonderful. So thank you for all your extra work.
Thank you. It's certainly an effort of a lot of very dedicated people. And we've got a lot of really good people putting in a lot of hard work. So, yeah, the faculty and staff at Southeast Tech has worked tirelessly at this. And so, again, I'm not alone. I'm sure when I say we would be happy to hand it off in 2020.
Hopefully, a lot of new students from the 11 schools.
Yeah, we're certainly hoping so.
The people who are competing, is it, is it bragging rights? Or is there, is there an award of any sort that they get? Aside from obviously getting to go on to the next level to compete? Is there any?
Yes, and yes. There are medals that are awarded. We've also had tremendous support from the various industries who have blessed us with prizes. Jim Jacobson has been working very hard the last couple of days. And he just secured about $1,000 in prizes for the construction-related programs. Welding is another one where I've had, I believe the number is, seven boxes worth of things from Lincoln Electric in our office over the last several weeks that are donations that come in. So we have truly had tremendous support from the employer base.
Nice. Thank you. Any other questions for Vaughn? Right. Cynthia, can I get a motion and a second to approve the Skills USA conference report?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
I agree with Cynthia. It's a great opportunity for students, but also to showcase Southeast Tech and what's going on out there. Just a ton of hard work that has happened out there for a long time. But, you know, good progress with, with increase in enrollments and all of the things that are going. Keep the momentum up. And thanks for your hard work.
It's a good marketing piece too, huh? Yeah, it's certainly an opportunity and I believe well timed. So, yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? I guess I will reiterate what we said in our work session. There is a school board candidate forum tonight here at 6:00 PM. And election day is April 10th, if people didn't realize that. There's city, mayoral, and school board election on Tuesday. So don't forget to get out and vote.
Or vote absentee.
Or vote absentee. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Adjourned. Thank you.